I have a little bit of a small group today. This is the DOJ conversation, but I'd have a whole bunch of people here who wanted to look at their notes. And, okay. Call to order to 202. And we've got Mercedes present, Felicia present, Twista. Lovely to see you both. Um, okay, so we're gonna go over our agenda for next Tuesday. Then we'll go over what our May presentation is shaping up like, and then we'll talk about our DOJ memo. So for April, I gotta remember which which subject. So for April, we are on standard contract language. Correctamundo, okay. And the DAS presentation. So, um, okay, just taking a look at. So Amy, DAS is gonna have a separate presentation on the contract language as well as their risk presentation?
Yes, DAS has responded to the questions just like any other agency has, like normal. So Debbie would normally give that presentation to respond to those questions. And then Bonnie Robbins is coming from a separate sort of division within DAS to talk about the risk management piece.
Okay, cool. So this is what the presentation looks like for next Tuesday. Any questions or feedback on that one? Go ahead, Felicia.
Hi, Mercedes, everyone. I just want to make sure I'm tracking. Was it in May that we were gonna get the DOJ memo? With all our questions?
So the process was after the April meeting, we sent them a draft. We asked them for comments. And this group will look over what their comments were and try to refine those. And then we'll resubmit those questions and then we can put a timeline on them. And if, and that's gonna include, and we'll talk about this when we talk about May. They did offer to do a presentation to cover a portion of those questions rather than just answering and writing. And so we're gonna kind of separate out things we want in presentation versus things we want maybe in a memo.
Got it. And that'll be discussed. There's so many meetings, so much happening. Okay, I think I'm tracking all this. Thank you, Mercedes.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about those questions today. And if we wanna say like, we wanna put them on the May agenda, we can decide that today. If we wanna put them on the June agenda, we can decide that today. If we want a presentation in May and the memo in June, we can just like, well, that will be the decider to that, which is why I thought we'd have more people, because I thought I told people that.
Thank Mercedes.
And Helen, welcome.
Oh, hi.
Okay, so if there's no questions about April agenda, we'll do it the way we've been doing it. Let everyone do their presentations and then move on to the DAS risk mitigation. Amy, can we add a little bit of time in there for a look ahead again? So that we can kind of do a little bit of a preview of May and maybe even June. Okay. If that feels wrapped up and good, then the next thing we have for the May agendas, we have our sufficient reporting that we still, I don't think we've done yet, and the mechanisms for ongoing review. So I'm gonna close my spreadsheet first and then I'll share it. Okay, can folks see that? Okay, is it too small? Okay. So this one, we'll do the same way we've been doing before. We'll kind of establish our, our questions and then any survey responses that we, that we want. So in this particular question around sufficient reporting, I think this is where we were maybe looking at some potential admin burden. Whether or not funding that is available is enough to kind of capture the reporting, if we're catching the right reporting things, and we can make some recommendations around these things as well. So one of the first questions we had up here was, can we create a rule or mandate that reporting requirements must come with staffing and operation costs to meet this? So I think this is part of like, if we end up with a you know, recommendation around admin rates, for example, is that sufficient to help cover this? Or do we need some other way of thinking about reporting requirements? And this one, I think, is tricky because reporting is gonna be so different from type of program to type of program. But let's go through the questions and see kind of where we, where we start to germinate some ideas. Can we potentially guarantee grantees or contractors influence discussion about the outcomes? When sparks a funder audit? When, when sparks a funder audit? Audits can be, requirements can be punitive, unhealthy for grantees. Maybe this is more of like, is there a standard audit schedule? Or are these inconsistent, maybe? Go ahead, Twista.
Thanks, Mercedes. I was just also wondering, because I feel like the governor's office had asked a question around reporting requirements for all the programs in the state that, you know, provide services to people experiencing homelessness. And I think I've always wondered, like, why there might be reporting requirements in the first place? Like, are they, like, are they either like state like regulatory, like administrative rules that require reporting? Is it like a federally mandated part of that contract or grant? Like, I think understanding maybe part of why there are reporting requirements is useful to know, too. And then I think stemming off of that, understanding what state agencies are doing with the data that they collect through reporting or with actual reports themselves, if it's like more of a qualitative report, because, I mean, I've, I've also asked that question through executive order 2303 is like, what do, what do agencies do with the information? It's not always very clearly answered. And so I think what I'm trying to get at is if we can get an understanding of like, making sure that we're not overburdening people in the number of reporting requirements that are often in contract language or, you know, other types of requirements that are in there, like, without having a clear connection to how it's being used and whether it's actually being used in a way that's like helpful for people to understand what's happening.
Yeah. So I'm kind of looking at some of the other questions, trying to kind of, how do I pull together some? Because I think that that is definitely getting at the questions around what, what's, what's necessary? Like, I think there's sometimes discussions of like, well, let's just collect a lot of information and we'll kind of think about what it tells us after. As kind of one way of doing that. I also think financial reporting is often not in maybe a lot of the program officer's minds reporting, like they're thinking more about the quarterly report or the monthly report. Your attendance for your program, your narratives, and they don't, and they're not necessarily thinking about all the financial reports that are happening as reports. So then there's a little bit of an imbalance, again, going back to that. How much of the, how much of the work are you funding? And then how much of the reporting? Are you funding or not funding? So maybe part of our question, I like the way you kind of phrase it, which was just kind of like, how do you determine? How do you determine what reporting requirements? And then I think this has essentially some sub-questions, right? Identify any rules or statutes that impose requirements? And then to the other question around burden. The audit piece, I think, is interesting. Because like when might not be a good, good way to phrase this, but like when considering reporting requirements, are you combining the effort necessary for any quantitative or qualitative reporting, financial reporting and audits? Like, do you think about those as a unit?
And I don't know where this last question would go, but just understanding that connection between what is being collected through reporting requirements and what state agencies are using that information for, like, I mean, like for like financial reporting requirements, it's pretty clear, but like for other ones, like, I don't know, it's like they're asking for I'm making this up, like demographic, demographic information, are they then like turning around and actually using that information for any analysis? Or is that something that they are just collecting and it's just sitting there? Because if that's the case, then that needs to be revisited, so.
Yeah, I think I want to think about that question a little bit more, but I like that one.
I think this is a little bit related to our DOJ memo request, because my guess from the presentations we've seen so far is a lot of this, some of this may be collected just because they've been asked to collect it, right? So the answer just might be because we're required to by DOJ or some, something else.
Thought I saw Hannah.
Um, hopefully that makes sense. I tried to just write it out to make, to make sense. So two things kind of coming up for me. I think the first one's sort of there. I guess it's that, like, when a state agency is thinking about, like, okay, well, we need these five reports and this level of detail and demographics, like, how do they think about that in terms of timing? Time needed from the, the organization's perspective and like, is that incorporated into the administrative cost? I guess I want to ask like a somewhat pointed question of like, is it, is the time needed to fill out these reports part of the I, I guess I want to know if the agencies are are thinking about this and understanding that, like, what they're requiring is, is not part of the service that they're paying for. It's, it's extra. And then another question.
So I'm gonna put that over here as a yes/no question. But if if we wanna phrase it a little bit differently, we can add it over to this side as part of a presentation question.
Okay.
I think we're kind of, I think we're kind of mentioning it a little bit in like, you know, how do you determine reporting requirements? And I guess not the same, because it's about whether or not you're paying for the reporting. Yeah. Let me know.
Thank you. And then my other question is, my understanding is there's a county that does what I'm about to mention. I don't know if a state agency does this, but I'm wondering if, if, if any state agencies apply the same federal reporting requirements, even when there's not federal money attached? Like, is that a habit, a, a system that they use as just like, okay, this is best, what's it called? Best skills, best. Oh, my God, I'm back from vacation and I'm not adjusting well. What is it called?
Is it best practice?
Yes, thank you. You take such good care of me. Yes, is it best practice or is it? Is that what they use as like a guide? Because it's so some would call it over the top. And so if it's not necessary and required, like, what, what is being asked and what's guiding that? I hope that makes sense. I might stop talking entirely.
No, I think it's, you know, I think that's a good question. And so I think, so here we have like, do you collect what is required? Or do you add agency-specific requirements? Do you have any internal analysis of the data? So I, because I feel like it's almost that question, like, maybe it's up here. How do you determine reporting requirements? Identify any, or explain how legislation might impose requirements?
Thanks, Mercedes.
I imagine there's probably, oh, what did I do? I imagine there's some kind of requirement here, like if it's over a certain amount of money or if it's a certain type of project or if it's in the legislation. But I actually don't know if there's like a standard practice that the state uses, like, regardless of other requirements, we, you know, expect audits for contracts that are longer than two years or like, I wonder if there are any guidelines that they're using there? And then, okay, this is another use of data question. I wonder if part of this question is like, do you collect data solely for compliance? Because I think that gets at the like, so what do you do with it? Why I don't do anything with it. I'm just collecting it to make sure that they're spending the money the way they're supposed to spend the money. And, and then I don't, and as long as they're spending the money right, I don't ever do anything with that data. Like, I imagine that's gonna be true, at least of some circumstances. I think that produces an interesting question where if it's like, if that is true, if you're, if it's just for the sake of compliance, then that goes back to then this question of like, what, what are the requirements? Why do you have to collect that? And that might be able to give us an indication of if we wanted to make a recommendation on streamlining or changing these things that we can. Because I imagine this particular recommendation is looking for either places to reduce reporting requirements, directly fund reporting requirements that are, that are necessary, and then doing useful things with that data so that they help improve programs and services ongoingly. Maybe that's part of the yes or no, like, do to, to use reporting data collected to looking for like a process improvement to I'm looking for the active word. Do you do you use reporting data collected? Do you That's just kind of a yes/no. Because then I think that also gets a little bit at what you were mentioning, Sweta, was just like, what are you doing with this information? And if we're using it, you know, for process or program improvement, that's good to know. So maybe it's not a publicly available thing, but it is actively being used to improve service delivery.
I have one. Oh, sorry. I have one about, actually, I'm the one that you're on right now, number nine. I don't know if this is related, it might be slightly different, but I'd also be curious if agencies provide like a level of support and like, I'm thinking like even of just like providing like a data dictionary for some of like the reporting requirements they have in place. And so if they're asking folks to like collect information on like someone's housing status, and sorry, it's all coming from, you know, my little housing and homelessness-related world, but like, if you're asking about housing status, like making it very clear to understand what they mean by housing status, like, are they saying like, are they asking for folks to collect information on whether someone is like stably housed within like, you know, like owned, like owned unit or like a rented unit or like, you know, like just things that kind of help clearly define the type of information that people are asking for. And I feel like some agencies probably do this, but it's not like pretty standardized across the state, so I don't know if that would be kind of helpful with like reducing like changes to reporting on an annual basis, too.
What is outlook?
Thank you for taking my nonsense thoughts and putting them to paper in a very great way.
Go for it, Helen.
We could also use the term data quality assurance for that, because to that point, it is one of the other contradictions is you collect all this data, but because you don't have the consistency of how you're collecting it, it really doesn't mean anything. And that is training that takes resources for everyone. The other thing I was thinking about is does the agency even allow for flexibility in the frequency or intensity of reporting? Because it doesn't make sense in my mind to have a one-size-fits-all when you are trying to reach different parts of the state or different communities. So I don't even know if it's possible to say, we actually understand that the capacity of this organization is smaller and so we're going to do like reporting twice a year instead of quarterly, right? Like, is that even within the realm of possibility? So I'm wondering if we can add a question about where there's ability to be flexible on reporting.
So I wonder if that is another kind of like sub-question here. So this is the how you determine what reporting requirements will be included. Maybe it's part of that, and this is kind of a similar, like, where can people influence? So maybe it's like, to what degree are reporting requirements co-created with grantees and contractors? Or where capacity of your grantees are tailored? Okay.
Tailored to the size of the grant even, right?
And then I think I'll make this also a little bit of a yes/no, which is just And then I think I'll make this also a little bit of a yes, no, which is just our maybe a multiple choice one here. We'll say I suspect we'll get a lot of Bs, but I just want to see. Oh, take a look, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven survey questions, and drag this one up just to get closer together. Is time and staff needed to complete mandated reporting considered in funding? Kind of like, go to what degree are your reporting requirements tailored or consistent? Do you require audits, yes or no? And do you use the data, yes or no? Do you use the data for compliance purposes only, yes or no? Do you offer training on how to meet reporting requirements? And do you provide direct funding for evaluation and reporting? And, okay, and then presentation questions. A lot of these are like questions with sub-questions, but so how do you determine your reporting requirements? Asking to identify any legal language that requires it, explain how legislation might require it, as well as federal. And then asking about the, to what degree are these tailored? When and how often do you require audits? Types of tools, training, or templates do you offer on how to collect that data? And then what do you do with qualitative, quantitative, financial, and audit data that's collected? Do you have dashboards that show the data publicly? Do you just collect what is required, or do you add agency-specific reporting? Do you have any internal analysis of the data? I might say on this one, if yes, shared and stored, is that what I want to ask? So I kind of want to know, like, do you just keep it in-house? Or are you reporting that out to someone else that might end up using it for something? Go ahead.
I just want to make sure we potentially include, I've appreciated, I think it's been in the last two presentations where staff are given the opportunity to share what they think could fix some of these issues. And so I'm just, I'm genuinely curious about, you know, I have, I have no doubt that they hear from their grantees about that the reporting is too much or overwhelming or whatever. Like, what, what are some solutions they have to, to addressing some of this?
You go see it there. I don't want, I don't know if I want to narrow it too much, but do you have any recommendations around reporting requirements? I feel like it's too vague, though, to do what, reporting requirements?
I mean, we're, you know, I feel like it's been pretty consistent from grantees. At least the people that we've heard from is just that it's, it's too much, or you, you guys don't even use it. You know, so I mean, I think the agencies are well aware of the concerns. And so what, what are ways to to fix, but, I mean, I, I 100% understand, like taxpayer dollars, they have responsibilities, you know? But if they could wave a magic wand, you know, is it about more time? Is it about more technical support? Is it about clear rules based on how much a grantee is given? Yeah, I'm, I'm curious what they would say.
What was the last part of what you said?
I don't know, but I like what you, you have here, and I think you could just delete the and.
Okay. I was like, I felt like there was one more thing.
It's out of my brain, so don't worry about it.
All right, we'll leave it at that, to right-size admin burden while ensuring compliance. Okay. We feel good about those? All right, so we'll bring these ones to our next meeting in May. See if anyone has anything they want to augment as far as those go. All right, and I'm gonna stop sharing real quick so that I can share a different thing. And let's, okay, so now we've got April done, we've got May drafted, so now let's talk about DOJ. So this morning, I got a chance to chat with our DOJ friends and collect some of their feedback on the questions that, that we provided. So I'm gonna say, these are, these are my notes, I didn't like verbatim take down what people said. This is my impression, these are my notes, my understanding of the conversation. Um, don't pay attention to this just yet. I'll explain that in a minute. Okay, so the first thing we did, I'm actually gonna jump to the bottom. The first thing that we discussed was like, there was definitely a degree of confusion between asking DOJ to report back on like their component of the contract and grant review process, and then these broader questions about policy implications. So we need to, we need to separate these things for clarity for them. So the structural questions, we're gonna make separate and ask them to come do a presentation about their process, similar, I think, to the DAS risk management presentation. So it won't necessarily be on exactly the same topic lines as these other presentations have been, but it'll be kind of like, in a nutshell, what, what are they owning as part of the process? And, and so that's, this can do a legal sufficiency review and how it's staffed. Like, they can do a whole presentation on that one. And one of the things that we talked about was, they would appreciate if we could rewrite these questions with a little bit more inquiry and less assumption that there's a problem. In their opinion, there are some times where although an agency might complain about the length of time something takes with DOJ, that that's how long it takes. And that, you know, it may be difficult for them to meet a timeline that they want to meet, but it doesn't necessarily mean that DOJ has done something wrong, or that they're understaffed, or that they're not doing work efficiently. It's just that some things do take time. So they've asked that we kind of restructure these questions a little bit to kind of take out this, like, assumption of like, how do you improve the turnaround time? Because it assumes that the turnaround time is broken. And, and so that was the recommendation there. One of the things that was an interesting example is like that the review that they do, although the statutory requirement is about the legal sufficiency, they may also offer other types of recommendations. And those recommendations are not required to be actionable in the same way that the legal sufficiency review is. So then we want to keep that in mind as we think about these questions, is that there's portions of information they're giving to the agencies that are non-negotiable, like you're not meeting legal sufficiency, you have forgotten something important, versus them saying, we noticed this language in your draft contract, and it could open you up to this or that risk. It's really your decision, department, on whether or not you change it, you don't have to, but you could. And if you did, we could help you figure out how to change it to minimize some of the risk that might be exposed in the way you've currently drafted it. And so I think that was helpful, because they did mention that for the legal sufficiency, they do have, you know, KPIs on like, meeting those timelines. But on the other stuff, that can be a little bit more of a wiggle room. Since it's not part of a statute requirement, it's really their, their like straight-up opinion about risk in different areas, and the agency is allowed to kind of take it or leave it as simply advice, that if they choose to take it, it will create more process. And that's not DOJ's fault, in their opinion, right? That's, again, just what the process takes. So I think we can definitely still ask this question, how many reviewers do you have? I think this is probably not a good question, because it assumes that they need more capacity, and we've been asked to not, not make assumptions in the question. So I think we can just kind of generally ask, how many grant reviewers do you have? I think we can, if we want to know how much it costs, we can, but they also said that it's not necessarily a direct per-contract cost, because they have teams of people who work on these things. Go ahead.
Thanks for all that context. Could we ask, like, would you like more?
We can, the person who would do the presentation, she was there this morning as well, Renee, I think was her name. She said that she does, you know, she has like vacant positions, and they routinely ask to maintain those if they have them come budget time. So I think we can ask, like, what is a, what would DOJ consider a full team?
Yeah. Thank you.
What is the average turnaround time, I think is fine. I think this one is probably fine too, because this is just us looking for the specific OARS and ORS. Uh, go ahead.
Oh, Mercedes, on the previous question, on the average turnaround time for reviewing contracts and grants, I think it might be helpful, just, I don't know if we can be a little bit more specific there around like the dollar amounts too? Because I think some of the, I think the responses that we had asked this question, I think after the first meeting, and DHS had provided a little bit of insight, saying that it's like five days above 150K and nine days if it's below that, or something like that, I can't remember the exact, the exact numbers. But I think having that slight delineation is important, because it sounds like they have different processes based off of dollar amounts too. And I don't know if they have more reviewers based off of like the division, or, you know, I think like, getting a better idea of like the full picture of beginning to end on the DOJ process, based off of like the different types of contracts and grants and dollar amounts would be helpful. And I think this is also coming from a perspective that if the group decides that they want to craft a recommendation based around improving this process, and I know improved, they probably don't want to hear that in terms of like improving, but I think it's pretty clear and transparent that this is a wrinkle, that they have to go through multiple hoops to get to an approval of a certain dollar amount or a certain type of contractor and grant. So having a very clear recommendation around like which of the process that we'd want to actually create a recommendation for would be great to know. So I think that's where having that little bit of specificity would be great.
Yeah, that's a good point, because I think there was also this comment made that like one of the KPIs that they do track is the first substantive feedback, and that is currently about a five-day turnaround. That's not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's done, right? That's just the first round, there could be multiple rounds of that. We could ask that in kind of like a, you know, what, what is? Or, and we'll just give them the, you know, the softball, because we know the answer to that one. What's the average length of time for the first substantive feedback to agencies?
Yeah, and like what would trigger a re-review? I think that's kind of unclear to me too, is like, is there a certain, like, what is like the substantial change? That means that it has to go through the whole process again.
Go ahead, please.
Would it be appropriate to ask, with regards to what is the average turnaround time? If they internally are working to decrease the turnaround time? I guess, are we speaking from, I, I obviously have one very strong perspective that I'm hearing. And I, I, I appreciate all this feedback that we're getting from DOJ. And I guess I'm, I'm wondering, you know, if it's, if it takes five days, if it takes 15, 35 days? Like, is there, are they working internally to speed it up? Like, is that a, I guess I'm wondering, is that a value of theirs? And I, I'm trying to, I, I want to ask it in a thoughtful way, being mindful of the, the feedback that we've gotten. But I'm also hearing partners and grantees.
Yeah.
And I think if, if we just, if we go back and say, like, oh, well DOJ reported that it takes this many days, and here's why. I think if we can add some context of they believe strongly that this is the right amount of time, considering the level of detail and thoroughness and expertise? Or is DOJ also exploring what it would mean to, for it to take less time?
Yeah, so I will say, I think what has been interesting in some of these discussions this morning included was this, I think, a very different way in which different parts of this system identify how much power and influence they have over it. Like, I feel like agencies project, or I don't know if they feel it as mu, as much as they're projecting it, I feel like they're totally projecting it, that DOJ has a lot of influence on how quickly or how slowly their process goes, what they can or can't do, and how much it's going to take to meet those requirements. Honestly, from the DOJ staff so far, their interpretation of their engagement seems to be very passive, that they are just a reviewer. If they don't, if they get something from an agency that's incomplete, it's going to take longer for them to review it and move it on. And, and that's, that's what that takes. And so, and they can take the blame for that, the fact that they had to send it back, and that they're waiting for more information to come. And it's technically at that point in the process, but, you know, they can only review what they can review. So I think one of the things that if we're wanting to make a recommendation around length of time, some of that is also going to maybe be a question of you know, for, on the agency side, how often are they submitting information that's deemed insufficient to begin with? Because I think that that's what DOJ would say. But if you want to speed up the timeline, then they should make sure that they have everything included before it's submitted, and then we will have a much quicker review, right? Like, I don't think they'll share an answer that identifies something in their process that needs to change. And I think we could definitely say to, and this would be a longer-term body of work, that we want to like re-establish a grants, you know, grants and contracts timeline to be on a separate fiscal calendar, like start in September. And so then the timeline becomes, you have from July to September to get all of your grants and contracts reviewed, if you're renewing them, and that you should stagger your contracts and do them every two years so that you're not reviewing everybody every June to September, right? That, and I think that kind of recommendation That, and I think that kind of recommendation shares the responsibility, right? It puts it kind of equally on all parts of it. And then I think once, if we were to give a timeline, we'd probably get more of these answers about, okay, now I know what I would need to meet a three-month timeline every single time. And I think that's the kind of, the part that we're missing, and why we may not get from DOJ the same kind of response around, like, how do you think you can improve? The way we've been asking that of the agencies, and then, I think, just being more willing to share where they, where they feel like they have room to improve. So, I mean, do we want to put a question in there like that to say, if there was this kind of timeline goal, what would you need to achieve it? Or not? We want to leave it alone.
I mean, I like that, I appreciate, you're already, like, in the recommendations, I love it. How, yeah, I, let's, let's pitch something and get a response. I think it's worth trying.
Can we ask them, like, specifically, what type of organizational and, like, financial capacity they need to streamline the review process? And I'm using streamlined in place of improved, but you know what I mean?
Okay, so if we were to make a recommendation that the agencies in DOJ has complete review and approve new or renewing contracts and grant agreements. I don't see, this one's hard, because, all right, it's just theoretical, I'm not going to think about it too. How does that look?
I love that, because it gives them something to respond to, like, even if they say, like, that would never be possible, and here's why, like, that would be helpful information for us to not only be mindful of when we give our recommendations, but also shares, share with our peers who have been, who have very vocal opinions about, and like, are, I, I guess, I mean, I feel like over the last year, working on this bill, there were just a lot of fingers pointed. And so this is, this is all really helpful information for me when I think about what's going to make a better experience for everyone.
Okay, so we have five more minutes. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
One, one more, one more thing, sorry. I also want to get clarity around, like, which ones they're reviewing that they're required to review versus which ones they're reviewing because an agency asks them to. Because I think my understanding is that there's multiple types of review. There's, like, the ones that they kind of have to do, and there's ones that the agencies are like, oh, we'd like to have your eye on this. And so, like, it's more of, like, an optional review. So does that add to this additional need for capacity? Or does it kind of, you know, lower, or like, increase those, the time between review and approval? Because they have all this additional workload that isn't necessarily required?
And then with the last couple of minutes we have, so this is going to become essentially a separate document. This is just DOJ's component of the process. We'll send that to them separately. And then these were the questions we were asking, basically, in a way to try to help inform what we can do as part of the task force. And I, and this was, this was another difficult part of the conversation in that I think the way folks would be more comfortable is if we got all the way to the very end of our process, and then had them look over stuff once we got, like, really specific. My concern with that is, of course, I don't want to waste a lot of time to put something on the table that ultimately is, you know, like, a goose egg. Like, this, this will take way too much work, hire constitutional amendment, or some kind of madness like that, right? So what I was thinking is kind of giving them kind of some specific ways to answer these questions. You know, one, just like, tell us what OARs or ORSs allow or disallow, what this, what this question is asking for. Let us know if you can see, just on the face of it, any constitutional issues that might come up. If you can't answer it because you don't know, say that you can't answer it. If you won't answer it because you don't feel like you have essentially permission to give us that information, then say you won't answer it. So kind of like, giving them some buckets to put answers into. And then, and if we're not going to have time to do this together, shoot. But restructuring these questions to then be more like, you know, the task force would like to recommend, you know, any admin rate that's set for state has to be passed through the local jurisdictions. And then ask, like, can you tell us where that's allowed? If there's any constitutional issues, can't answer it, won't answer it, right? And, and kind of start to bucket it out a little bit more like that, and kind of like, take a little bit of the can you, or could we? Because basically, what they said is, you could do any of these things. Like, on a long enough timeline, with enough money and enough process, you could get to yes on, on any of these things. And that's not the kind of response we're actually looking for, we're looking for the red flags. You know, we're looking for the things that would, that would make it like, we're offering something impossible that would just not really be effective. So, yeah, we're already at two fifty-five. I'm sorry, y'all. So we may need to, I think, I'll, I'll at least take a, a swipe at this, or whack at this, and bring something to the April meeting on Tuesday. But we may want to use another, another meeting to get into this more fully. So with the last, like, minute, what would you all recommend? Do you think we need a subcommittee to actually develop these questions and refine them enough? Do you think we could just do it at the May agenda planning meeting? Or do you have a third recommendation?
I think that subcommittee is an interesting idea, though I am very mindful of your capacity. And then, is there any chance we could digest some of what you come up with before Tuesday's meeting? That would just help my brain.
Like, call the question at the April meeting?
No, sorry, I mean, like, it, it sounded like you're going to play with this document a little bit. It would help me, rather than, like, looking at it live and digesting and giving feedback, it would help me, even if we got it, like, that morning. And I, I get that we can't have it probably be like a Google Doc, but can it be a PDF? That we can just, like, look at?
It's a good question. Amy, can I share this with people, or are we not allowed to, like, do asynchronous, like, Google docking?
Well, is it going to be part of, like, the agenda discussion on Tuesday? Or it's just a document for us to consider?
I would bring this up during the look ahead, yes.
Okay, so I think we can share it as part of that. The only thing is that we would have to post it publicly on the website. So as long as you're okay with that, then we could do it. It would be contributable, I mean, folks couldn't contribute inside of the Google Doc. It would just be a static PDF that they could react to. And then if folks have reaction to that, we wouldn't want that to go back and forth in emails. We would want that to, you could send it to me, and I can collect those, those comments, and we could take our plan of action from there.
Okay. When are you sending out the agenda?
Monday morning is usually when I send it.
Monday morning, okay, so I will try to get this to you tomorrow, then. Cleaned up a little bit, I'll take the structural stuff out, and we'll put it in a separate document. And then we can share it with the agenda and just say, like, well, like, to be reviewed at the meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, have a great day.